I'm me, your honor. Thank you folks for being here tonight. If you would please value pets. Our heavenly Father, we come before you again to conduct the business of this county. We ask for your guidance. We ask for wisdom. We ask for courage as we make the decisions that have an impact on all of our citizens. For us to discern what is best for all. Oh, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that we have. We thank you for the beauty of the seasons. We thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We ask that you protect those who protect us. We ask that you be with the citizens of this county and keep us safe. We ask these things in your name on air. First item is the minutes from the October 7th meeting.
Who's approved?
Motion to approve. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Yes, there was one. Hold this, the second paragraph. That second line that says that your much was not created in this way.
Okay.
Roger, say that. Okay. Um, sorry, let's turn better. Right, next is the appearance of citizens. Scott Moore. By Cook Foods.
Scott Moore, 14126. Howie, 116.
I'm not valid.
George.
All right. Greg, if you would, update Mr. Moore on.
I'm not a scientist and I don't play one on TV. However, I have a lot of results. Doing the testing the way they did actually violates EPA standards, but there's no other way to do it because you don't have water when it doesn't rain. Sherrod is hairy and he would not give me any specific conclusions. But if you look at the people coal form, which means the bird poop or whatever, there seems to be a higher concentration. Cook is right here. And downstream here, you have a higher level. And here, higher level of coal form. Whereas here, right next to the here, you have a somewhat elevated rate, a number, but not nearly as much. And then coming down into your property, I'm assuming it's traveling this way, it drops and then it drops again. But there's still higher than here and then this is kind of the control. So, like I said, I'm not a scientist. I can't figure it out. I'm going to find somebody who can, will say, tell me something about it.
But we do have the ratings, so.
Yes. And I think there's probably some kind of conclusion that may be drawn from it. I just have to find out the person who can draw that conclusion and will stand behind it. The guy that took the samples had some ideas, but he wouldn't stand behind it, so. The ditch was supposed to be completed this weekend. Did you see them after work?
They were working. Now they got it completed, but they did work on it some time.
They're still working on getting the ditch completed. Contacted JDA about closing off those cross drains. They said they'd look at it, but wouldn't make any guarantees. I contacted Scott, no, Joe, I'm sorry, at the plant and have not got a response back about the additional property Cook owns, which would be a way to... I couldn't find anything on tax rules, both either under JCG or Cook, further down the road, so I couldn't identify that property. So I asked for the information on that, which when I get that, I'll give that to DOT. And that's about where we're at.
That's to be to make sure that any of the runoff that you have on their property.
Now, who's going to have to okay the closing off of the coal thons?
JDA.
And any idea when this... When can this start happening is what I want to know.
They didn't give me an answer. Bobby worked for them for 25 years, maybe he can tell you.
I, I, yeah, we're trying to find out if it's something they will do or if they want us to do it. But we have to get their approval to do it.
But this is going forward, I think we are.
Yes, yes. We are moving forward for that. As well as the other, identifying their property and making sure that any additional that does go down that side, we handle in some way on their property.
Or it stays on their proceeds? Okay. No matter.
Greg, on these, these levels, as a result of this testing, is there, is there an acceptable level?
That's, I asked that question and since, since it was raining, it negates the normal level.
Would dilute it?
He just said, he said, you know, it doesn't.
It would make it worse, I guess, depending where the, where the worst comes from.
I think it would probably, um, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I don't do qualm by to make that judgment at all. You've got to find somebody who is.
Yeah. But I would be interested in knowing if there is a quote acceptable level and whatever that level is, and especially relates to the folks of the neighborhood like Scott. You know, there may be some level which is not harmful. But I think it would be helpful to know what that level is.
I'll see if I can talk to somebody, maybe EPD.
I think EPD can give us those answers. And now our opinion is probably a base level that there and under, it's, it's okay. But anything over that is not.
After glance what the acceptable level was to build the impaired, or to prevent a stream being on an impaired string.
Okay.
That may be the closest thing you can get to a base level, too.
Thank you, but I hope you are fine.
Sorry.
Okay.
So that's where we're staying.
That's where we are at this point.
That's what we should do.
But we're still.
See something happen.
We're still doing, doing things.
But we still got the odor, too. And the odor is getting worse and that's one I really want to get on next. It's not getting any better and it's time when it's real bad.
All right.
And we know it could be better. I mean, it has to be better.
Is there any particular?
Do you have any copy of that?
Yes.
You got your email?
I don't have any right now. How many handles on?
If I got it by email, you can hand me.
Is there any particular pattern to the odor as far as days of the week or times of day or?
It's off and on, but it's worse when it's cloudy and you don't see nobody. Depends on what's going on up there. But I smell it all night. I mean, it's not a day or night that I don't smell it. And like I said, there's several days during the week where it's just really atrocious. I mean, it just really gets to you, it stinks that bad. But, you know, maybe this rain washed away a bunch of stuff, you know, throughout this minute, but it's still on a regular basis, it sits at least two to three days a week that it's really stinking. Now, I can't say why it's those sort of times because, you know, if they live in the area, I might tell you something.
Yeah.
I was just thinking if there was a pattern, then it might be easier to trace it back to exactly what they're doing at the time, which produces the odor.
This is kind of going out on left field, but does Fort Benning has a landing strip, right?
Lawson Field.
So do they let, do they release weather ones there?
They didn't use to. No.
Those weather readings will show you where there's an inversion in the atmosphere. And if you could correlate it to inversions, then you would know that was causing, or you could rule it out that an inversion was causing. You know, it's either causing or rule it out. So if it's not an inversion causing it, then it's something else that's causing the additional stink. If that makes sense. There's an inversion in it. Sometimes when you get coal front come through and you start hearing radio stations from 500 miles away because an inversion setting up and the radio waves are bouncing, it does the same thing to the air man.
Yeah, but that just makes the smell at worst.
I understand. I understand. What I'm trying to rule out is it an atmospheric causality or is it a stink causality? If that makes sense.
I believe it's a stink. I mean, there's no other way.
But if inversion may just make it smell worse.
Right, at a certain time it smells worse, but if the smell is there, it's always going to be until they do something about cleaning something or whatever it takes. And I just feel like they should have to do.
Lawson Airfield used to have a significant weather station. Now whether they still do, because essentially, I mean, there's none anywhere near their helicopters and planes there that there was 50 years ago. So they may not have cut that back considering that they would have all that information.
I'll have to check that out.
Winner must be you. You out in the show?
I didn't jump in your pants as far as tonight as I.
Nancy, anyone else?
Haroldson, same.
All right, Haroldson.
Haroldson, with this 9/8 sorting. Just a little bit about what you've been talking about with Scott. Has it been run through DOT, AWD plans, and everything? All those parts will have to be resized if you take Trump water out of one drainage here and put it in another drainage here.
Yeah, we're talking to DOT about that.
I told them, we got the house set of plans before we started doing today.
But you talk to them first to get those plans to see if that's something that we can do and then we find out what we need to do.
Not the last meeting. We're talking about it. That's okay. Speed by, holes in front, pour them. Thursday, at the main, out of the backside of the garden, between that, white pickup truck kind of stopped with all the hoes, stopped with the speed by problem. I couldn't tell whether it was a county truck, a gang truck, or a white, hope got like logo, but I couldn't see it. Saturday morning, about 8:30, same week, two guys from the gang's company showed up with a pack. And they counted on that, up the asphalt. And they pounded on it almost to half. They pulverized it really, what was big chunks of asphalt was pulverized and packed down in the ground. We don't have the speed by, but that been solved. But that's not the way you solve a problem like that. To solve that problem, concrete saw, saw two parallel lines, 24, 30, 36, is it, whatever. Take that stuff out, see what's the subgrade was, look what the base looks like. Out of packet, if it goes pumping, you know we got water, they got a weight. Then you deal with it back with the plant mix. That's not the way you can fix it. Water go, as soon as it starts raining, freezing, water go, go in this. It just gonna freeze, it gonna come out, and it's gonna be a pretty bad hole on this project fixed. They were doing this, I talked to the two guys, they were the same two guys that actually put service lines in. And I said, I said, when will they give gas? They did not, total surprise. He said, on Thursday, the DOT permit man come by and shut them down completely. They could not tie nothing in until they got permits. Yet a half, and they ain't had no permit from the DOT? Something wrong here, something bad wrong. My wife is real cold natured. I had to get up and build a little bit of fire in the insert to take the chill off the house because I don't have no gas. I don't get gas in the next, some kind of good promise in the next 10 days, I'm gonna fill up my fuel tank tight. It gonna be next fall, so I even hook in, that's the best, if you lost out on contract money. I have, I don't get up, build a little fire, and have a little bit of oil in the windows and made a tube wall. It, it's this hard. If I had gas, you could turn it on, take the chill off, turn it off. It's been a couple of months since they've been around, knocking on the doors, some listed I've been, but we can do better. They won't give you $800 to sweep over. Sometimes things are too good to be true. They not true. And this is not true either. I don't know what the problem is. Well, they never, just like JCG do. Nobody has ever come in this meeting and asked me anything. Your job has always done the bed and forth. And we like you. Our problem. And the smell, we had five inches of rain last week. It flushed that comb over. It takes about six, seven days for it to get out. But you know where that stuff went? It went out to Ford Creek, to Isle of Bill Creek, into the Fall Bear, into Goat Rock Pond. Goat Rock down, taking water off the top. That stuff had time to float back to the top. It went into Alden, and all mixed up again. Time it got through there, it was back on top. And it went through the, what the slumber slants is a great place to be played, but it ain't a good place to be played in that bed. And the shows they created. I don't know, we gonna do something. Time Hunt Valley's gonna do something. We still leave it, couple options. Get the lawyer, see what you can do, incorporate. We gonna do something to control our own, yes, retirement. And that two miles. Take a look, see how many employees, spouse, employee spouses, all the employees that live in there. They law your people, you know. But they right there, that smell's on, they don't say nothing they can't afford to. And we don't ask them to. There is a lot of need to count up.
All right, thank you, Bob. I had called them like I told you I would last time after our last meeting and told them about the bump in the road, so I assumed they were out there, I will call them again about the repair job.
That's it. I didn't know whose truck it was. It was a white truck, how we look at it. I appreciate you something about it.
All right, thanks, sir. Okay, moving to old business, the first thing on the agenda is the unsafe building ordinance. We have already had the first and second readings of that. We tabled the vote on that to see if there were any other comments after we started putting the, put copies out on the back table. They are available on the website in drop down menu. So I will now open the, open the, vote to any, the motion. I think the motion last time about Jim. We did, I'm not sure we had a second, but we all stuck to Jim, all right. So we got the motion by Jim and now we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, there was one minor change that was made at the request of Commissioner Langston. The person, appointed person for the county to enforce this was changed and county manager or, and or his designated is responsible for doing that. And that's the only change that was made since last.
That's, where was that, Jim?
That's in section 151, I believe it is.
Paragraph two.
Yeah. Section 5-151, paragraph, under inducers of abatement, see duties of the owner in appointment of official charge, uh, charge to exercise. And we deleted the director of community development and put in the, the county manager and all his designated.
Oh, okay.
And that was the only change that was made since last.
So number two at the top of page four. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motions, if you've already raised your hand? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the financial statement from July, which is the first month of this current year, current fiscal year. Entertain a motion for that?
Make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, that was second. Second, discussion. I would like to point out that this, a couple of things on there that look a little funny and they deal with insurance and things where we have a, maybe one or two payments per year. We are working on that to get that corrected so that we're supposed to spread those out evenly throughout the year to have them placed in there in the month in which that payment is made. Just makes it look better if somebody picks it up instead of saying, well, you've already spent four times what your budget is for that particular month.
We're, we're working on getting notes to explain those things.
There will be notes on that.
Continue to make progress on that.
We have the July, August statement later on to bring up and while it does not have those notes, we did get email notification of what that is, but we want those to start appearing on the actual report itself.
You didn't get a copy today? Okay.
Didn't I get, didn't I get paper copies of it? It's just the email. So with that comment, if there's no other discussion, then I would call for the vote on the motion to approve July. All in favor, signal ready. Motion carries. Next item is the radio system calls. Dean Ginn is here. Dean, if you could answer any questions.
Dean Ginn, Dean's commercial too, but I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you guys.
Dean, you know, you and I have had several conversations about the length of time that it's taken to, to get all this up in one.
Correct.
Can you give us a quick update on where we are and how soon that we're going to get this on?
Sure can. As of today, we basically have 12 sites on the air under project. In the, in the county itself, we obviously have the I Mountain site, Hopewell, Northwest Harris at the industrial park, Ellersley, and the Phoenix City site. Obviously, we're bringing, there's several other sites outside the county. That's the main focus in our immediate public safety operating here in Harrisville. Harrisville is an issue directly addressing the Antioch Fire Department community based on the backwards. As we saw from the initial RF designs, the west side of the county is our most troubled spot in the total internet. So that was the unknown damage coverage we were getting. When the first site come up, Northwest Harris, keep in mind, we're only 80 feet up the tower at the industrial park at West Point due to that's the least space on that site. We're in the process of working on the site at West Point that we have come to a negotiation with you guys and to let you know where we're at currently. City of West Point came back to us and realized the opportunity. So the water tank, which is on the ridge just outside the industrial park, is back in play. They went back to council and they're waiting, they had to go through two meetings, which the second meeting will be November 10th. And we expect them to approve the ability for us to put the site up on the ridge, which will release that spot. We, y'all come to agreeance for us to put in, in off of Davis Road. If they don't, we're to proceed with the West Point site. What basically will happen there is we go back on the ridge, we use the elevation of the ridge, and we have to build a less tower. If we stay in the industrial park, we have to build a 360-foot site versus a 250-foot site. So the economics come back into play, plus the ridge location gives us a better RF coverage in the city of West Point should they decide to come up with system at later dates. We've got a couple of issues that warrant us looking at that and we hope to have an answer by the end of their November 10th meeting. Back to the Antioch community area, obviously, when we saw the deficit in coverage over there, we were trying to react to it as quickly as possible. The Comptector site, we have the location map that you guys have given us. We have the kind, our actual surveyors could come out next week to pinpoint where we can put the tower itself. And in the interim, I was over at work with the burrs, get a power pole over. Antioch agreed to allow us to put the temporary sites. We said make it for the pole, full fibering, got it up and running, so that site is on. It did give us a good relief in Martin Road area, Lake Skillet Road, but we still have some trouble spots down on water. There again, we're only 80 feet, we're proposing, we're building 160-foot site at the Comptector site, so we'll, once we get higher up, we can actually see the sign side talking and talking. So once we get that site up, we can better evaluate where we're at with coverage.
Dean, how much did the smartphone help with that situation, being able to reach additional firefighters there?
Uh, we're getting pages out of all of them via the smartphone. That application, jaw product, is in service. We were ready to launch it last week. We currently have Antioch on it, verified numerous page outs, done test page, and they're getting via the smartphone. There were a couple of firefighters that did not receive it, but it was more of an issue of their service provider, the calls going out. So we are paging on the Tetra system and then we're doing backup page and standard practice on all of that. So we are getting a message out to the, two devices at this point in the interim, which gives us some redundancy that needs to be in place long-term anyway. But that site there again, we're poised, as soon as we get the survey done, final agreement's in place, we've already got the structure, I already have the shelter, we've got the transmitter. So I would hope that we're probably in a 30, 60-day cycle there, being able to get the site constructed and up to its full height. There again, weather, everything comes into play there, but we've got hardware there, it's just getting that pinpoint spot where we can construct.
Is the problem with Antioch, has it, is it much better now?
It's better. There's still some of the firefighters that live down in some of the low-lying areas on the water. That line of sight, I'm not so sure we'll, we'll get 100% filling coverage there. My suggestion is let's evaluate the coverage once we get that site up. Keep in mind, in the past, we've been paging from a site that's at the Goat Rock site down closer to.
I'm coming to ask you about Goat Rock.
154. My personal opinion, based on RF maps we projected at the very beginning, I think that's probably going to come into play to meet their requirements for as much portable coverage as we can get with that area, but I don't want to say 100% until we see what we get out of the air skill site. Once we do that, keep in mind, I do have that site at Goat Rock. There again, we can facilitate on that site. It won't cost anything from a monthly aspect, we'll just have the associated cost of the hardware and the infrastructure connected. But there again, I'd like to evaluate what the air skill provides for.
It's already 60 days on the air.
Yes. And like I said, I've got everything hardware-wise is there, it's already in full operation. It's logistically building the site and letting cure apps that we can load and also shelter. So that takes us about a two-week cycle once we start the construction phase, we have that done. So it is hyper-ordered.
Good. I said that, well, we're really going to be the best with what's possible.
And, and well, we're, like I said, that's the hyper-ordered list, it's not just addressed right there. Bring you up to speed on the Koka Lake site, where we haul. We're waiting on Verizon to sign off on the, it's already made through the due process. As soon as they validate the lease agreement, we already have the shelter, we've got the transmitters, we've got all the hardware sitting in the warehouse. So there again, we'll move on that, so we cite it as quick as possible as well. From a construction aspect, obviously, the tower's already there, we'll have to set this structure, slab, structural, like we generally, there again, it's about two weeks cycle as well as we do that. Priority wise, those are our two priorities for our per sites. Once we get both of those up, like I said, we'll rerun RF map coverage to see what we've got. I do feel like our long-term goal will be that we still are probably going to need to look at the site in the Koka Lake area to address the Gray Rock Road area, which falls off directly behind. But that site would also facilitate coverage into the Fortson Road area, which is in a low-lying. area, which is in a low-lying area for a line of sight, as well as that Goat Rock Site. So there again, we're in the same proximity that we initially told you, we're going to take the approach, so let's not go build too many sites on the front side in case we get what we need out of minimal sites. But I do think we're probably looking at two additional sites to meet our needs for talking and talking.
You can come back to additional sites with about sixty-five thousand dollars per site.
That would be correct. And to explain that, that is an associated cost, but we're spending about a hundred and fifty thousand per slide, so that's the prorated cost that we're passing to the county, just like we did with the High Mountain Site, Northwest Harris. I picked up the cost at Eldersly and think that diverse is picking up the balance of that, over above that cost, so it's, it's a savings to the county of the hardware cost right there. Only attribute cost after the fact is the connectivity, whether that be fiber, if it's a place where diverse has fire, they're doing the connectivity, such as where we haul, that's not in their territory, so we're relying on a connectivity device at this point, which we need a wireless modem on Verizon. So there again, the cost savings is being passed to the county, which is prorated cost to the county for part of the network.
I appreciate the savings, but this is still a lot of money, actually. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than we got originally anticipated.
From the, and I understand what you're saying right there, but there again, as we told you on the front side, the cost projection was outlined upfront, but the cost point per site is to be drastically built. I hope it wasn't a miscommunication, we have to change more.
So what you're saying that we still may need two more sites?
One. We're in a good situation to need this site.
Well, I'd like to know, I guess the commission too, is this it? Or is it going to be more?
I feel like that's where we're going to be at for a portable mobile talk-in. And like I said, there's no way to guarantee and tell you that we're going to get all the coverage. We've got good coverage, we've got more coverage in the county than we've ever had, and I want that to be understood.
And that's what I hear too, especially from my front office.
I've been in favor of this from the very beginning, that it was a dangerous situation that we had, and that currently exists in a way that isn't fixed.
In my honest opinion, I do feel like we're going to be justifiable to additional sites to get us where I'd like to see us portable and dependable coverage. I don't see us needing to do more than that, from what I've seen on RF models, but there again, until I get the sites up and get them running, do a test analysis, there's no way for me to guarantee. But based on what RF models we initially looked at the system and very good, those were the sites that I proposed and disclosed, we would possibly, in a pretty much merit of the incident, and that gets us portable coverage through the county, attributes past that, you know, our focus was within our county boundaries. Obviously, we have mobile coverage and portable coverage into the hospitals and stuff downtown, but we don't have all of this covered. That's not even the needs, our needs was the four corners of our county, that's what we're trying to address. Dean, can you tell us how the repeaters are working that you went ahead and installed in the sheriff's vehicles? It's the additional costs for the mobile gateway repairs. Basically, that means the deputy to get out of the vehicle in an area where he's got mobile coverage, because mobile's strong. Portable is not working or can't register, just say he's unseen and he's down in a valley or in a basement or in a house where he doesn't have portable coverage. So we enable that repeater on the car, enable the talk around, it's portable, and escape communications through the car back to the network. Do you have any examples where that's had to come in into play? Our instances are using that, you can now about for if they're on scene, they go into the nursing home, for example, in where we haul. That was a trouble spot for us, because obviously we don't have the site up on the air, but they can enable the gateway, get out, now they have full coverage on the site with portable scenario, police departments or sheriff's department, same thing. So there's numerous uses to do that on a daily basis right here. They go into the hospitals in Columbus, they've never even had cell phone service in the past, now they can enable the gateway, go into the hospital, they pull contact, learn how it works. So it's a, it's a very, I felt like it was something that was needed because we have a deficit of coverage at the beginning, that's the reason why we need to put it in. And I can tell you, it's saving the county over seventy-five thousand dollars if I need to do it on the front side versus coming back at a later date, pulling the air and having to put the air in and stuff, so I had my decision on it, I felt like it was warranted so I did. Other thing that, if you go and watch them in dispatch, nobody can be accused about their sitting at a donut shop because we know where everybody is, which is very helpful though, as far as especially Jimmy's route and what it is. Now, they can visually see, you know, they call in and say, we're in route back from the hospital. Well, they didn't know where they were before, well, now they can see they're rolling back and there's a call on the south end of the county, they can immediately dispatch them as a closer unit, so they're. I gave you a case of one yesterday, I was in the nine-one center working with them, they dispatched a fire away from the hall, fire came in off of Twin Lake Road. Guys telling us, my fire's on fire, field's on fire, next lab rest was not on Twin Lakes, as firefighters got there, one fireman actually found field in the back where the fire was at, or just way back, or dispatched a flood to see where it was at, directed the rest of the, the guys are not on Twin Lake, all of them need to move down to the next rate turn here. Those type applications are huge resources.
That's, if you'd not, if you'd not seen that, I would advise you to lie, didn't get a demonstration on that, and it is amazing how you can back and just look at the screen.
We've been able to automate a lot, we can send messages to vehicles, get information out, you see where your people are, and I invite any of you to have, they won't have to give your presentation at any time if not.
How far with the portable, how far away can you be from the car?
Depending on the terrain around you, we've been anywhere up to half a mile with the vehicle and that communication's back in. And granted, it depends on what the terrain is. The ideal scenario is, and where this comes into play, just say our guys get into a foot chase and they run out portable coverage wherever it may be, in the remote coverage area of their territory. Patrol cars can actually move, park the car on the hill, it's a high area, they're going to get away, now the guy's back in communications, they can take another vehicle, move it down the road and park it. System's smart enough to know how many gateways it needs, since this one's in service. If you want to have a second one, then now the guys can park their car a mile down the road, the guys keep going through the woods, now they're back in coverage, here they go to the next site. So in state of the art, it is a very, very neat system. And we're, I would say we're well on the way to meeting our goal here, and I'm very proud of what we've got right now, and we've got a lot of people looking at the system, that this is a valid one option. So we're staying attached to this and making sure that person needs to, as the county's interested party, will make sure this is fully functional, it's full potential. And working for search is key, you know, I don't want to start to stop short, but you know, obviously, we give you that opportunity to tell us, you know, once we get any site up, you're available, we come back to, we want to keep you in the way of any close cost aspects.
We were told in March or April, it'll be up in May. In the May, we were told that it'd be fully functional by the end of July, it is now November, essentially. We should have it done in sixty days?
We went operational in August.
Yeah, but fully functional.
As far as any additional sites and so forth.
I don't understand how the parent company can go out and sell additional things, because if someone came to me, I would tell them, it's a great system, we just ain't never got it fixed. And someone from the parent company should be here advising you to be sure it's done, because it's just any sort of customer service they have not provided.
And I have had their support in, and to take, the issue we held it up for was some software that's not ready for what our needs were. After July, obviously in August, one thing went live that I felt like it was ready to launch, so I had to take the heat for, I could have launched in January if we told you, but it was not ready for what we need, we had some customizations that hadn't been in the end. So from that aspect, I'll take the delay aspect on, that I was comfortable with going live in August. And like I said, the additional filling sites, to bring it to closure, obviously as soon as we start them, they will stay around only, I think we're in a thirty-day cycle on the cycle, which we start the sites.
Given the terrain that we have, we'd probably not have to get a hundred percent coverage.
I'm always hesitant to say a hundred percent. We have, if you look at the Harris County, Togo compared to any other county in the state, we're as challenged as anyone. We have a rate front foot center of the county, we have the rates on the north side, we have the valleys and peaks of the backwaters, so it is a very challenging aspect.
You want us to have that expectation?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Right. I share the cost concerns also.
And it's, it's well.
And I kind of make a note, some of these, you can't tell, perhaps you forgot the system up, but there's some of these other things that we didn't do our job. Somehow I didn't get the right number of radios and all that.
Correct, and I want to make sure that was apparent right there, you know, because I tried to outline everything we best could. Some of the costs basically was changing numbers of radios based on being a year and a half ago when initial counts were given, or the size and so forth. And there again, we passed the cost on anything that was having to be required at the nine-one center, so I did break it down to have the answer. But I think as far as everything from the initial cost aspect is outlined and covered at this time, and the only thing we have is based on the expansion sites, so as far as any other part of our cost, we will work out.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I'm glad we're better than we ever have been before.
Like I said, it's, it's a, it's a project that I had been seeing need for for the last twenty-five years, and we're much better placed, like I said, once everything's fully functional.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the financial statement for August.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that, the county manager, our little discussions about some changes on that. I might table that to the next meeting, please.
All right. Next item is appointment to Board of Family and Children's Services, Charles Trammell, is no longer in there, his term was to expire June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen. Commissioner Woods has recommended that Trudy Johnson be appointed to complete that term. Do I have a motion?
I suggest that we table it, that the head of Department of Human Services said there's a problem, or taken the position today, he, that he just said she cannot do it, and he hasn't given me the line of verse one.
All right.
Because she serves on the county.
And I want the line of verse, I can't imagine, there's a cancer on board, there's a cancer.
I've got a question about that, are there any components that, are these all large, they have mission districts or compilation?
I can't really answer that, I don't come out just in front of me, it's.
I know I have one that's been pointing from my district, I don't know how, it's been taking a long while.
We try and make it from districts, sometimes there's one in the area depending on the population.
And when I started looking into it, because there's two districts, that they are more or less in municipalities, because West Point has one and High Mountain has one.
Okay, so that was tabled to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I have some new slash O business, I suppose. I've had some complaints, and I went down and took a look at the paved portion of White Spur Road to the Muscoby County Line, and it is some striking on the shoulders, and we could probably get by with the center line that we have, but I would like to add that to the list that we have.
Striking?
Mm-hmm.
Well, what I want to do is actually want to add it as a change order to the current contract, so we need it done now, as part of that.
All right, get it done.
Okay.
Now whether the next, next year.
It should be, I would think it's probably less than five thousand dollars, but we'll, I have Mr. York going out doing measurements now, but I don't, we'll probably have it done before the next meeting because this, this paving project is going to move fairly rapidly once they move in there. And to mention that they're going to move in Monday, they're going to start on the paving, second week, first week in November is when they're going to be over on Harrison Mayo, those are going to be the two big jobs, so they'll, they'll probably want to suggest some alternate routes, at least on Harris Road, where they're going to be doing the full debt reclamation, so they're going to move fairly quickly, so we'll probably get this done before the next meeting.
So you want to make that a motion?
Yes.
You make that a motion there, I'll say. Make a motion in a second.
Just a second.
Any discussion, all in favor, signal ready. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. Okay, then moving to county management portion, first, big results, sanitary sewer, and I would like to make one comment before we start, Greg, is that any motion made probably needs, and needs to include that it is contingent upon the developer's approval and the bond validation. Take that out, turn it over.
All right. We had five bid bids, four of them were very, fairly tightly grouped, one was a bit high, but the four shows that we, that we're bidding pretty competitively on this, they've sharpened their pencils, and it's Gordy, the engineer has reviewed the proposals and finds that Gordy Construction, who was the low bidder, meets the criteria, and their low bid is three million, four hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twelve cents, and they recommend approval.
I'm just curious how one bid is over a million dollars, and you rest, do you have any?
Well, there's some folks that go, well, we don't really need to work, but you know, if they're going to pass and that, we'll come do it. And the one reason that Gordy has an advantage, because they don't have mobilization costs in there, so they're, when you put mobilization costs in there, they're, they're all the group, all that group together is pretty hyped together, so you know the costs should be pretty accurate.
And this, just to reiterate, this is the reason why the developer has to approve this, but developers pay the cost because this is not an expensive account compared to all, but since we will, in the funding system, we do have to approve this, we're moving forward.
And just need a motion, a motion in fact.
We need a, open and forward a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'm going with the low bid of reported destruction, contention upon approval of developer and on validation.
All right.
Now second.
Motion, yeah, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Do you see if I raised your hand? Motion carries.
Do we have an idea about whether the developer may approve this?
Very soon, it would be my anticipation, because I know part of the contract that was included in this for the bidders stated that, I think for the date of the contract, they have two hundred and forty calendar days, not workdays, calendar days to have it completed. So I think.
Listen, I, from a conference, telephone conference I was on today, I think there's one, one more easel that has to be acquired, but they don't anticipate that, and it's difficult as the last several easels have been yet.
All right. Next item is the roll-off truck, solid white, Greg.
All right, sir. We, as you know, we had a roll-up truck stolen, and that will be eighty-seven thousand dollars of the proceeds, and that will go to pay for this, the rest will come out as solid funds. solid waste funds. We had quite a few bids, only a few of them met all our standards, the low bid that met all the standards came out of Peachtree State Truck Center, it is a great liner, the bid is a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars, which we recommend to the commission for approval.
All right, I have a motion. I'll make that motion in a second.
Second.
Discussion, have we recovered the stolen truck?
No. Who wants to steal a truck?
They had the engine and sold it for a lot of money.
Stolen from the locked yard, solid waste, so we will. Okay, all in favor of that motion, signal, and motion carries. Next is agreement with MR Systems for the SCADA system replacement for the water, water treatment plant in the water.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, previously, we have brought this before the commission to review and outline the, the need for the, the system, and the attorney has reviewed the contract and finds it to be in compliance. One thing of discussion, that this system will be able to, since the whole system's down, getting even a piece of it out is important, so what he has done is he's designed these in groups, so that they can be brought up as an individual group, so the, the low ladder tower will then service these other sites, so once we get one up, we get several up, so it won't be, it'll be a rolling online, it'll come up, come up, come up, as, as the systems get completed.
So while it takes eight months for the entire project, we'll have some.
No, it won't take, it won't take eight months, but, no. But the other thing is, and I think it's an exciting thing, it's kind of like the radio system, we used to take sometimes forty-five minutes for the, the system to cycle. We're talking seconds now, the new system. So if the radio system was a quantum leap, I don't know what to be on quantum leap, this is it. So again, there are so many issues with the old system, I think we've discussed those well, so something we definitely need, need to proceed forward with as soon as possible.
And our director, the water department, is, is okay with all this, right?
Yes, he's part of all this.
And it's coming out of his.
Yes, it's already, it's already in there. It's something that's been needed for several years.
Had to be an emergency.
And with the passing of the department manager and other things, they have complications.
All right, so do I have a motion? I guess the motion is to approve the contract and authorize the chairman to sign it.
I'll make a motion, will be approved in a second.
All right, now, motion, have a second. Second. Discussion. All in favor, signal, and vibration here? Motion carries. Anything else, Greg?
I will need executive session for a few minutes afterward, sir. Personnel.
All right, Mr. Taylor, I will turn it over to you, and I may want to make a power, in addition, just explain to the citizens where we are with the, District One, Vickers.
Unfortunately, we have to replace the commissioner for District One, Georgia law provides that a person who has been convicted of felony is not served, and the commissioner of District One is on the ballot, and of course, he's not qualified to run for reelection because of the, the incident to which he had been pleased. There is a procedure, although it's a little sketchy, under the Georgia election code for, about which the, it has to be adhering to disqual, of disqualification with notification to the state Republican Party, and that is whether or not they wish to appoint someone to run it instead, and then that is, is in the process, it should be taking place in the next couple of days, after which, depending on what, what transpires, there may be a necessity to go to, to council of state, who has the contract with the state to change the electoral ballots, and so it is somewhat of a, I would say tedious process, but it's one that there is not a whole lot of outlining of the Georgia statute to do. I'm not sure that the Georgia statute has actually caught up with the technology since we're voting electronically, and, but that is, that procedure has been initiated and should be within, we should know something by the end of the week, person actually has to have a dollar to go.
All right. Plus we have early voting, our technicals.
Yeah, and the statute says on the, of early voting, that, that those votes, one that is disqualified are also are not counted as disqualified votes, there's no, unfortunately. And you really don't see this type of circumstances very often, thank goodness.
All right, thank you, Mr. Taylor. And then the next item on your agenda is the agreement renewal, Q public.
Yes, sir, Q public, this is the portal for the tax assessor, if you've ever used to go online to the tax assessor, you know, it's quite, quite comprehensive and it's good site, it's easy to work, and this, we've had it for a while. This agreement will be a three-year agreement, or actually, that'd be a one-year agreement, or two, two annual renewals, for the, costs three thousand dollars a year, and the, we just need to add a jurisdiction, venue clause to it, and then I think it's ready to go, and Wayne certainly recommends this, and is very pleased with this Q public debt, and I recommend it to you, after having reviewed the contract, again, it's basically the same contract Wayne previously signed, that we previously signed and approved.
Six thousand. Six thousand. Six thousand a year, yeah.
What does that say?
Three. Try and say.
Yeah, right.
I think it's three years.
Yeah, three years.
Three years is six thousand.
Six thousand a year.
All right, we have a motion, move to approve, second. Motion, second, discussion, all in favor, signal, and motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is an agreement, rise, the renewal with Trail of Business Services, Trail of Business Services is the entity with whom you've contracted on several occasions, and this is the same, exact same agreement we used before, that they come in and will audit personal property, which is from time to time, when the businesses make their returns, then you, you, we have to go out and, or Wayne has to have somebody go out and audit and see, are those in fact correct returns, as far as evaluation goes, and real property is easy, where I'd like to see it, personal property is not necessarily the thing, but this one has worked well, it's an annual contract, and it has, has been in place for several years now, and like I said, it has worked well for, for tax, tax assessors, they concur with it, and I recommend it to you for your.
All right, and ten more. I'm going to make a motion. Go move to approve, all right, you have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question, this probably pays for itself, doesn't it?
Yes, yes, yeah, by the time you, you go out, and sometimes you'll, you'll find that they, you know, they're evaluating less than what the paramount value is, or they're not including something in the, in the evaluation, or their return, then you're able to pick up that difference.
So we probably.
Yes, oh yeah, I have a question about that. Otherwise, you don't, if you don't, you just, you, and it's not to say that people are dishonest, it may be that they, they're valuing their estimate of what their property's worth, it's not necessarily.
Keeps.
Yeah, it keeps them honest, gentlemen.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, signal, and motion carries.
And I have to move forward, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I will then make the motion to go to executive session for personnel and property application. Motion in a second, in favor? Okay? And then the others are, thank you.